All right, so we are gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is Friday, February twenty fourth, oh, nope. Friday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, the time is two oh five P M. And this is the Monroe County, um, Long Term Finance Planning Committee. This is myself, uh, Counselor Crossley, uh, Counselor Liz Spital, and Counselor Huck are all a part of the Long Term Finance Planning Committee. And both of us are here. Counselor Fidal is here along with me in person. And virtually, we have Counselor Huck attending virtually. So we will go ahead and get started with our adoption of the agenda. Do any of you, um, have any changes or amendments to the agenda?
I do not.
Okay. How about you, Counselor Huck?
I do not.
Okay, all right. So if we can, um, go ahead and get a motion to approve the agenda or to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those will, we need to do a roll call vote since we have somebody attending virtually. Is that right? Okay. All right. And we'll get a roll call vote in just a moment.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Huck?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Right, thank you very much for that. And next up on the agenda, we have approval of summary minutes as presented. And those were the minutes from last year's Long Term Finance Committee from June twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, and August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. Did anybody have any corrections to be made for the minutes?
I have a question on the August one.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Huck.
On the minutes of the August meeting, it was recommendation from Greg Garitas that we proceed with the resolution for the, uh, to move money over into rainy day. Duke, and so I would like to get a copy of that resolution and what date we, but because for some reason I'm blanking that in my head whether or not we actually did a real resolution. So I wanted to call that to attention that we were told in August to do that. So when did we do that?
Yes, I will send that to you.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I have no objection to the minutes.
Okay. All right. And so can I please get a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Need a second.
Um, so I wasn't here back then. Should, would it be appropriate for me to second or vote on this?
Anybody can second, but, um, that is correct.
Okay, I'll second then.
Okay. All right. And can we please get a roll call vote?
Counselor Fidal?
Abstain.
Counselor Huck?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero to one abstain.
Okay. Right, thank you very much. And I can understand why you did that. Completely get that. Now, um, we are moving through the agenda. Um, item number four, Long Term Finance Committee recurring meeting time. Um, I guess to our members here that are part of the committee, what say you in terms of this particular meeting time? Does this work? Does it not work? Are we thinking, I would tend to think that we could do this, um, quarterly or as needed, um, given the circumstance that we see in the State House right now? Um, but just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that. Counselor Huck?
I think, I think that's appropriate if you would like to just say to be called upon as needed, uh, and just move on. Because we don't need, we don't know what's gonna happen.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you, Counselor Huck. What did you say?
Oh, I'm saying because we don't know what's happened. We don't want to say once a month when we might wanna meet, you know, every, a quarter or whatever. Uh, so let's not take a lot of time talking about, let's just say we'll, we'll do it quarterly or earlier as needed.
Your opinion is noted. Okay, how about you?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So do we need a motion for that or?
So moved.
Um, no, so we can, so there is no motion that is needed for that. So instead, right now, what we need to do is we'll just say, um, and I have the right to do that, is that we will just move it forward with these. We will just call these as needed. Okay. All right, so we will go ahead and get started. Um, I do wanna say that, um, we do need to end today's meeting today at three thirty. Um, I will, I'm not able to stay any further past that today. Uh, so I apologize for that. So without further ado, we will move on to item number five, which is overview of Senate Bill One and the impacts that it has here in the county. And I see that we have someone from, uh, F S G that is online here. Mister Greg Garitas, if he would like to.
Yeah, thank you. And we actually have Charlie and myself here from F S G. And I'm gonna let Charlie do, uh, a brief overview of where we are. But just, I, I don't know if you heard Counselor Huck and I talking, but since, and you know it, since we're in the middle of the session, uh, that I like to say all the sausages or all the meat is being fed into the sausage grinder. And until eleven fifty nine, the night before they, or the night they go home, it is not going to be an absolute. So Charlie, we've seen some better stuff recently, I believe. Um, and and less of an impact. But that it's going to be important once they get out of down downtown Indianapolis. Then we're really going to have to assess. Otherwise, yes, it is going to hurt. And we just don't know how much it's gonna hurt. But go ahead, Charlie, if you want to.
Yeah, I can give you, um, some estimates. And like Greg said, there's a lot of changes still going on. Um, the current version is much better than the original version, but it's still, um, a negative, a, a big and negative impact to the county. So the first thing, uh, would be changing the annual growth quotient. So that used to be based on personal non-farm income. Um, the average over six years, and we would get to grow our maximum property tax levy by that. So last time the, the state looked at that, they said for twenty four and twenty five, they were gonna cap that at four percent. So it would have been closer to five percent had they not capped it. Um, this bill would take that even further and would say for twenty six, the growth quotient would be zero. So that would mean no growth in property taxes for twenty six, one percent in twenty seven and two percent in twenty eight. So if, if we, um, let's just say, for example, we would have gotten four percent growth in property taxes for twenty six, that's just over a million dollars that the county, um, will not get in additional property taxes for twenty six. So, um, that's, that's kind of a, a baseline. Uh, everything that we've heard, um, on this bill makes it sound like that's the minimum negative impact. That, you know, it's, it could be worse and the current bill is worse than, than that. But we, we're kind of bracing for that. And, and one of the things in your packet is our sustainability analysis, um, just the general fund. But that, um, we wanted to at least get something started to, to show you what some of the impacts are. So, um, the other things that are in that bill changes, um, the way some things are assessed. It changes how mu- much, um, homeowners get in deductions. And so there's other things, um, that impact the county. And the, the current total estimate of revenue loss for twenty six is just about one point four million to the county. Twenty seven, it's two point six million. And then in top twenty seven, it's almost three point six million. So you can see some of those changes ramp up, um, and, and gather, um, bigger, they, you know, bigger impact to the county as we go. So that's kind of rough estimates. Like I said, that's the current version. There's a lot of, long way to go. And hopefully, um, the county, along with the other ninety one counties, are all in touch with their legislature, legislators about trying to minimize the impact. Cause that, that's severe revenue impact to the county.
Now, Charlie, in the sustainability, the draft that we put together on page eight, the assumption was, and I, I, I guess we gotta tackle the three hundred pound gorilla that's in the room. We went from a seventeen million dollar levy in the general fund to a twenty one million dollar levy in the general fund. Now, we're assuming then that they will allow us to go and reclaim what was lost this year. Correct?
That's correct, that we would.
And that's a big assumption if for some reason the apple cart would upset it more. If everybody understands what I mean by that.
Yeah.
Well, yes, but, uh, will they use the number of the max that we could have had? Not, not the working max that we were working on, but the one that, that they says we could have taken it to, which, and then add whatever growth levy on top of that, the ones.
So Marty, that, that's the, what I call the three million dollar question.
Three point eight million, that's a little bit more.
Yeah, so that will be the, uh, you know, our, our assumption is in this first draft that we would be able to make that up. Um, the bill could be as enormous as y- you remember Senate Bill One, Marty, when you, they took away any access you had in your bank levy. And they said, forget it, you don't get it again. So we have been down that track before. So I'm gonna say that jury is still out and it will be deliberating again until the end, Charlie, unless there was some other reading that's in there exactly. But I don't think there is, is there?
No, a- and I think that's a good point. We gotta be real careful about that because there are some features in this bill that limit taxpayers' tax bills from going up by a certain percent. So, you know, we could be hit by that, um, unintentionally, I would say, but that, that could be an impact that we haven't taken into account.
Uh, one thing I would like to mention is that, that, uh, zero, one, two, uh, that we're looking at for levy growth. Uh, remember, that's just for those that are inside that max levy. That's not for your, your, uh, bridge, cum, major bridge fund or cum cap fund, because those are rate controlled funds. I keep waiting for them to change that. I suggested legislation that would allow for, uh, dollars going into those cum funds that are a great deal higher than what was projected or needed. And then be able to use anything over that for like repair and maintenance or something of the sort. Uh, I don't think that went too far, but I, you know, I'm just trying to figure out some way to, to help out our highway department so that it's not all just tied to capital projects, but also, uh, try to take care of what we have. But I did not have permission of anybody to suggest that. I just did.
So, so I've, I've been tackling the Association of Indiana Counties, especially on the C C D rate. Because the C C D rate that it's controlled at is so antiquated. It has been around for probably, I'm gonna say thirty years. And the legislative, uh, people at the Association of Counties agree with me that that has really, really been outdated. And your three point three for, for some of the new council members, for the, uh, C C D rating, the point zero zero or point zero three, 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 that's been around for thirty years. And, and they've been just allowing the A V to grow based upon it and bring you in new money. And that's what Marty meant by it's a rate controlled, but it's such an outdated rate, it makes no sense. Now, I say, see Lisa Ridge is on here and Lisa knows that the Cume Bridge is not capped, the major bridge is capped, but Cume Bridge is not unless, um, it is only controlled by the most recent rate you've charged. And if we were to up that rate, Lisa, that would have a detrimental effect to the general fund. So everybody needs to really understand that the general fund and the Cume Bridge, not major, Cume, work hand in hand. They share dollars. If you raise the Cume Bridge, that will take from the general fund. I'll pause. Is there a question?
Let me look here in the room.
We're still at point oh two one three.
Counselor Huck, I was trying to go to the room here, so, um, I'll get back to you in just a moment. I just wanted to check in with Counselor Fidal and see if she had any questions.
Yeah, but I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Counselor Huck.
No, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, so, so we wanna, we wanna be care, you know, Lisa, we'd love to give you more Cume Bridge money. The answer is, you know, given the forecast that we've seen at this point, there's no way. And, and so, cause the general fund's just gonna need the dollars to sustain. So other, then other points on the Senate bill, if there is any more, Charlie?
No, I, I think that's the summary that we had.
But we, uh, I think, oh, pardon me.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Huck.
Okay, I think we've already seen that the governor has said that what has been presented by the Senate is not something he will agree to. So I think we can see some changes of sorts coming out of the House or a veto, uh, from the governor. Uh, so we, we're just halfway anyplace. You know, we're not here and we're not there. We're just halfway in between.
Yes, so to kind of follow up. So what this will mean is basically in, in, in talking to all the different counties that we consult with, from, uh, from Martin County to Tipping New County to Hendricks County to Hancock County to whatever, that the key's going to be for the future, the income tax rate. And, and that's what's going to drive the financials for Monroe County with a pretty much absolute certainty. So as we, you know, this, uh, long-term capital, uh, planning and budget planning is of most important over the next several years and choosing exactly what you want to do.
Another question? May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, it, I, I've looked at so many bills, I wanna make sure I'm talking about the right one. But the one that had to do with, uh, you're not going to be allowed to do a bond every year, you would have, it would be like every other year. So that will make a big difference from where Monroe County operates, uh, because they've sort of become addicted to every year bond. Uh, a- and I get that. Uh, that's the reason why we have more cash sitting around than a lot of counties who didn't do that. Uh, but if we're not going to be doing that, then we've, we're going to have to start looking at, uh, budgeting something in the, what I still call the oh four category for, for, uh, Cume expenses, uh, major expenses in the different departments at some point in time.
Which, which Counselor Huck, that's gonna be very tough.
Right, can't, can't happen for a while. There's no money there. How are we gonna make payroll?
Yeah. And so back to the, back, back to the income statement. You know, if you go to your sustainability and you look at your revenues that show up on page eight, that supplemental lit, bringing in, you know, with what we're trying to do with economic development, bringing in good paying jobs and keeping income up is of most importance. It's really important going forward, too. It will be the train that will drive down the Monroe tracks, um, as we head into twenty seven, twenty eight. There's no doubt about it.
So I have a quick question, cause I've been thinking a lot about all of this. Well, kinda have to, it's my job. Um, but I, I, I know that they end, like the regular session ends in April because there seems to be some kind of not, the governor not liking what he would particularly like to have in this. Could you all potentially see that there, they could be called back for a special session over the summer?
Well, I think anything's possible, but I don't, I don't think they really wanna do that the first year.
They'll avoid that if they can.
Now, remember, we're CPAs and financial advisors and stuff like that, not lobbyists.
Yeah, of course.
So we're not, we, we try and, I, I, I've already testified once or twice down there this year and kind of try and stay away as much as possible.
Yeah, I heard you on ship, Chihuahua.
Exactly.
Okay. All right.
Are we still talking about anything, any other bill that's in, in place now that, uh, that they're working on that might affect us?
Uh, we are still on, um, Senate Bill One and the impacts it has on Monroe County. So if we're done with that and nobody else has any questions, um, I think we can move on to item five, which is the pen and annexation. We know that there was some recent developments with the courts with, um, ruling against Bloomington and annexation, but I, we just wanted to touch base on that and see what will, your thoughts on that?
So Charlie, have we gotten an update from, um, the council attorneys?
We have not, um, we haven't gotten the final update on what that ruling was or what the next step will be for the city or for the county on, on that, or the taxpayers.
They did rule in favor of, of the county's portion saying, you know, the, the waivers, uh, as the county had presented it for the other areas. They, they got that part. Of course, that doesn't mean the city won't come back and, and continue trying. Uh, you never know until it's, it's all over. But one A and one B is still out there hanging. We don't have an answer on one A and one B.
And Marty, I thought Jeff had indicated, or the, uh, the council attorneys indicated, it would still be a year or so out. Is that true?
There, and we don't know for sure. Uh, uh, Bill Banks would probably tell us better, uh, have a better idea.
Is Bill or Molly or anybody on here?
Oh, Bill Banks is working for the citizens, whatever, and.
And we actually have, um, County Attorney Molly Turner King here. So if you wanna go ahead, Ms. King, Turner King.
So I had emailed F S G an update before the opinion came out, um, regarding annexation earlier this week. Uh, there are two separate litigation cases for annexation. The constitutional case, or the constitutional question is the one where we got the, uh, um, decision in this week. Uh, I think right now it's just a question as to if that's going to be appealed further. And then the citizens' case, I believe, is still in briefing. There is a request, um, for the appellees brief to be due on March nineteenth. So I think they're going to finish the briefing stage and then how it proceeds from there is up to the court.
So then Molly, when do you think we would have solidification of those?
For the opinion that just was issued, I do think it's like a thirty day, um, appeal. The, like, they have to file notice of appeal within thirty days, I believe. And so if they don't file notice, then, then that's the decision. And I don't know if the city plans on appealing or not. Um, and then as far as the briefing schedule, I, the appellees, the, that which is the citizens' case, the, the appellees brief is due on the nineteenth. I'm, haven't looked to see when the brief, if that's a response brief or what. So I imagine that one's gonna probably go into summer before briefing is done.
So at this point with the first case, unless they appeal it, we're okay?
It looks like.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
And so then it would come down to the other two cases and their impact of take, if they were to win it, their impact of taking that A V and that, and applying their tax rate and then redistributing the income taxes based upon that and some of the other taxes, which is what we looked at, what may, maybe three or four years ago, Charlie?
Yeah, and we do have in our sustainability analysis on page four, we've got, um, revenue factors of what we think revenues are gonna go up or down, um, for the next three years. So if you look under twenty six, um, we've got some negative numbers in there. And that's what we consider to be the worst case scenario impact of the annexation. And that was assuming the full annexation, all the different parts moved ahead, um, according to the original plan. So, um, originally, they were all supposed to be done and effective by January first of twenty five. That would show us the, the first impact on most revenues would be in twenty six. Um, and so that would give you a good, um, again, worst case estimate on impact to the county. So most of, most of those revenue changes would happen the first year after the annexation was done. The one that takes a year longer to impact the county is income tax because income taxes kind of flow a, a year behind everything else. So, um, but that would give you, and we can go through those if you would like, but that, that's kind of the, based on the original annexation, full annexation. So we still need to, you know, we need, if the council would like us to, we need to look at, um, the likelihood of the pieces being approved and what each individual piece might mean to the county, but that would be a different calculation.
But Charlie, we have those in twenty six. And Molly, if, if they decide it tomorrow on the other two pieces, would they not go to one, one, twenty six for annexation? And therefore it'd be twenty seven?
I'm not sure on it, Greg, but I can talk to Jeff and we can get back to you.
Okay, because I don't think it would be immediate. And from the auditor standpoint, there's no way we'd have to get to a one, one, twenty six A V, I believe, before we, and then it would be a lingering over to twenty seven. So we may be one year aggressive, Charlie, um, in, in maybe able to, even worst case scenario, move it back one year. Thinking out loud, so, so, um, th- this'll be again, another play by play, but that, that's right. I've forgotten, we did factor that into twenty six and you see that in the negative numbers.
And if you look at, uh, eleven forty two, uh, they did, that's on board to, from that house going over to the tax and fiscal, I think it is, uh, having to do with a income tax, uh, local income tax, uh, block vote. Uh, it extended that, I think, just one more year so that it takes more than the majority of the city council to increase or decrease or, or the income tax. Um, so that gives us another year, the county, another year of breathing. Uh, if they, let's say, if the city would raise, uh, the economic development tax again, they tie it, they have tied it, they chose to tie it to population, which means that they get a bigger chunk of the income tax. And so if they would increase it again, uh, at some point in time, and then they get, they get more of the population, they'll get even more of the increase. We should change that ruling.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we, this is getting sideways on the annexation or a little bit more. So maybe I'll, I'll hold the comment. But again, the, uh, reallocating or looking at exactly which income tax is ultimately the best for you going forward. I still think we want that, uh, time to think about that and deliberate that at more as we go. Because I, I'm just concerned the way it is be, you know, and, and things just keep changing, honestly.
Not as stable as property tax.
No, but if, and, and what I'm talking about is as we proceed with the funding of the, if I'm gonna call it correctly, the correctional facility. if I'm going to call it correctly, the correctional facility, campus or, or all of that, I think we're going to, we've got to be very, very careful.
Okay, um, does anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns on pending annexation impacts to the county? Nope. Okay, um, moving on. I know some folks are really interested in this one. Um, we have the merit deputy salary increase proposal. That's next up on the agenda.
Yeah, and our, you know, we need a little more information on what, when you're trying to achieve it. And we got the email and we read the email. And Charlie, we did not factor that into the document that we put together on a draft basis earlier this week, correct?
That is correct.
Because we got it, we got it earlier this week. And I guess, can you give us some color to what we're trying to do here?
Well, I think the biggest thing that we are trying to do here, and I don't want to speak on behalf of that department here, they have an ask of increases. And we're, A, trying to figure out how we, with everything going on and the challenges that we see related to SB one, you know, if we were to give this to them, how would we, my question would be, how would we be able to continue to sustain that going forward? Knowing that we could potentially be looking at some losses here. How would we be able to really sustain that? Because that is, like, I'm all for everybody getting what they need to get. And we already know, like, public service and, and, you know, public safety is definitely something that we appreciate. I just don't want to get into a situation where we give something and then we can't attain it or sustain it because of what the state is doing to us. And we ultimately have to make some really strong cutbacks, which could potentially hurt the county. That, that's my bottom line.
So do you anticipate the department to come on the twenty-fifth and make the full presentation on the need? And is the need to impact twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six?
Kind of want it now.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, but I guess. Yeah, so it's. Yes, so they want it now. Yeah, that's, but you said the twenty-fifth. That, to my knowledge, is not on the agenda for the twenty-fifth.
Okay, I just wondered, it's the full council meeting that I'm going to be in person. And I didn't, when you, I thought what I heard was this had not been totally heard by the council. And maybe I misheard you.
No, this was presented to the council on the twenty-eighth of January. Um, we were trying to have it back last year. And of course, we had some things that happened to us here and we weren't able to do that. And then we had the full presentation. We got the information back in November, but the full presentation was given to the full council back on January twenty-eighth.
Okay. And I thought. So Charlie, Charlie, sitting here at this point in time, there's absolutely, I, I mean, very little. I, I mean, we, I don't think there's a way to opine on it, given we're in the middle of the heat of the battle. And there is too many unknowns. And if you look at that draft sustainability we put together, your, for twenty-twenty-five, your revenues are severely under your spend. And forty-eight revenues versus fifty-three budget are almost fifty-four. And so my answer would be, there is way too much unknown at the end of twenty-five. You could have a significant cash draw at the end of twenty-twenty-five unless we start looking at this and changing some of the budgetary items. That's where I'm at, Charlie. What, you want to add some more?
Yeah, no, no, I, I think at a minimum, we would recommend to wait until the legislature wraps up to find out what the real impact is going to be. I think, you know, and like you said, that should be at the end of April, so it's not that far off. But that, that's just such a dramatic change that would, would impact the county.
And, and Charlie, we've got to know the starting point for any zero percent growth quotient, if that's seventeen million or twenty-one million.
Right.
Otherwise, it's a, it's a no-win situation.
Well, and is that not probably true any? We have to look at all of the salaries across the county, any kind of change. I would think we would try to go back to the, to the end of when we actually voted on the budget. Do you have down there any additional, because we've done additional in payroll since we've adopted the budget?
Oh, so since January, so in the last forty days you've done, or fifty days, you've done some additionals?
Yeah, we did something last week, the court reporters, which actually was something that was in the works for a while now. That's something that we did. And I believe that was information that was sent to you as well, because the fiscal impact to Monroe, or it was over a hundred thousand.
I thought I saw two hundred thousand. And then also that human resource was, those numbers were not included in the budget. Were they not? I don't think they were. Because that was done later. That was an additional person. I think that, that's what we need to look at is what financial changes have been put in place since we voted on the budget. Because that's the numbers that the state's looking at when they gave us the seventeen eighty-two.
So does the auditor know the current amount we have for the budget is fifty-three million nine thirty? So I'm hearing you say the current budget with the additionals would be something in the neighborhood of fifty-four million three hundred, which then just makes it even tougher. Is that correct?
I'm going to look at the auditor, Bree Gregory, to see if she wanted to weigh in.
I don't have that in front of me. I think all relevant information regarding the salary changes had been forwarded. So I think FSG has everything at this time.
Okay.
But do you know if it was built in, Charlie, the report that we received, was it built into that report, Bree? For the twenty-twenty-five budget?
It was not, it was not built into that.
That's what I thought. So we need to take the fifty-three-nine and increase it by the additionals.
Right.
And so you probably have a corrected twenty-twenty-five or an updated twenty-twenty-five budget, right?
Yes, we can pull that and forward that to you.
Okay, because we don't have it by category and obviously in this one we do, in this draft sustainability. Now, I'm also thinking.
Actually, Greg, the court isn't, the, the vote was taken on the court, but since they didn't get unanimous vote, they had to vote on it again. So that's not a, not already done deal.
Oh.
But that's also something that I think that we could factor in as well, just in case that is a done deal. Just trying to make sure, obviously, I'm not speaking for anybody, but just for myself here. But if that were to be the case, I think we need to look that, or look at that and factor that in as well. And I also just want to make it clear, because I'm looking at our council staff that's over here, all the things that we were needing to send in terms of the, some of the things that we've already done this year has already been sent to FSG. So maybe if you, when you're here on Tuesday, that's maybe something that could be touched upon at our meeting on Tuesday. I just want to make sure that folks know that we have everything that's been given out and there's nothing that's hiding behind smoke screens here that, if we don't have the answers right now, that's fine. But we, we've, our office definitely has done the due diligence of receiving information and making sure that it's going out to FSG. Because we understand there are lots of folks that are looking at this meeting and will look at it after. Um, we are live here to kind of go back and process a lot of things that are, that's been said. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
That's perfect. And, and let me also ask, I guess, sitting here at February twenty-first, what other things have you been approached for possible additionals that could be coming, I'll, I'll call it this, coming to a theater near us? So is there, I, I'm thinking, is there any early warning flares, probation, anything else that we need to know about?
Oh, raises for the county in the fall?
Right, I meant additionals.
Oh, additionals, um, not to my knowledge as of right now.
Okay, okay.
Well, Greg, what I would think we would want, we don't have any definites on this. But I know that we operate, our people work so hard to get grants back in. And now, you know, we might not be able to have the matching dollars on a lot of things that people get, work hard to get grants for. So we need to, I would think, take a look at what, what kind of liability we might be looking at so that we don't automatically just okay every grant for every new person or new, new program or something, if we don't have the matching dollars.
Well, so Marty, do you require before they file for a grant, a grant impact statement?
What, do I require?
No, just the council, the council.
It's, everything's supposed to have a financial impact statement, but we don't always. Let somebody else answer that question.
But I would say, just to counter, counter that, like if we, council staff does do a good job. If we ask and we need, we have a big ask that has a fiscal impact, usually council staff will get us that fiscal impact statement. And if it's not what we have, they definitely will make sure that we have that. I just want to make sure we, we do that. But, and actually, because the chair has privilege, I just want to go back because it, we're kind of going back down towards the, some of the other things related to spending in the county. I just kind of want to push it back up to the merit deputy salary increase proposal. So from my understanding, you have that information and maybe that's something that you can give to us at our meeting on Tuesday?
Yeah, I can, we can go over that on Tuesday.
Okay.
Obviously, yes, you, it, you know, it's a little hard when we, you know, we can't get it. We need a little timeline here before we get it. And also, I wanted to have a little discussion about maybe the best place is one of the income tax funds. And we have not had a chance to review that. So absolutely, I can comment on it on Tuesday. We're not prepared to further comment, but my comment for the record still may be in the middle of the, what I'm going to consider very, very important financial impacts coming to every county, including Monroe County. It, it is something that is maybe really tough to do.
Okay, and then I just wanted to, it looks like Auditor Gregory had her hand up here in just a minute. And then once she's done, then I can come back to you, Councilor Hock.
Thank you, Councilor Crossley. I just want to reiterate that I know my office and the council office is more than happy to provide anything necessary in any format necessary within reason so that, you know, Greg and Charlie have everything they need to update reporting. So please, just moving forward, if we provide something and you prefer in a different format, just let us know. We're more than happy and willing to work with you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilor Hock?
Uh, yes, I know when, back last year, when the Sheriff's Department was working on adjustments to the staff salaries and the merit deputies. One of the things that the council president at the time, Councilor Deckard, had said, let's look to see ways where, where we are going to find these dollars. I, I don't know exactly, I may not be presenting it exactly correct. But I know that the part that is tied to, because there's three there, the way it's set up, salary order is set up, that there would be some adjustments to the, the jail leadership. If so, those could, if there's enough money in that jail tax, that maybe we could move that portion of it over to the jail tax. But the portion for the merit deputies could be taken out of that economic development tax. Now, I know that that's what, where we were looking to pay back the bond for the jail, for the jail. So, but there was supposed to be some additional dollars left in there, even after you had stated how much for the jail. So perhaps we could pull it out of there. Or, or we could go to public safety and make sure there's nothing being covered under the public safety that's not truly a part of the public safety as much and, and cover at least part of it there. And I respond in those measures simply because that is what President Deckard had said at the time. And we, we just never got back to that and time and other things happened that got in between there.
So Marty, that's exactly what I was talking about, is maybe it would have, have an impact on funds other than the general fund. And if it could, then maybe that probability increases. If it's going into the general fund and the general fund only, the probability is low.
It's low, nothing.
Okay, um, want to touch base with, here with Counselor Fidel to see if she has any questions?
I think I'm keeping up to speed, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to know about the merit deputy salary increase proposal?
Do we have the total? Because I heard somebody saying seven hundred and some thousand and then I heard five hundred and some thousand. So the one that Jeff Cockrell and I worked on was like five hundred and some thousand. Is that where we are?
Um, again.
What's the number?
I'm sorry?
I'm just trying to get the number that we're looking for.
Okay, um. Heck it right now.
So the, I do have, Marty, the courts look like total fiscal impact was one thirty-nine. And Bree and Audrey, I'm trying to fi, find the one where you sent me on the, I know I saw it, but.
I don't think HR was in the, included in the budget. Because there was an additional person put on in HR. Different changes from then. I don't think that was part of.
Charlie, do you have the dollar amount for the jail? And the sheriff?
Yeah. The, the total on the document that I have for the merit deputies is four hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars for two thousand twenty-five. So that was the question, I think, of when was that assumed to be effective? It was, it probably not a full year. And then we also had an increase for the senior staff of the sheriff. And the, the twenty-five total increase for that was seventy-three thousand one thirty. Um and the the twenty five total increase for that was seventy three thousand one thirty seven.
See that in the packet here, okay. All right, so now that we got our numbers and we see what will happen with that, I I'm gonna. If no one else has any questions, comments, or concerns with that, I'm just gonna go ahead and move on. Um to item number eight, which is the last part of our item or agenda here. In terms of discussion of potential county spending restrictions, obviously, the the goal is that we are trying not to. Um we want to make sure that we are operating on a functional budget. As much as possible and and don't want to do any worst case scenarios here and. And want to make sure that we're taking care of all of our accounting employees as much as possible, but just wanted to. I guess, touch base with you, Greg and Charlie, and and get your thoughts about. In this sense of uncertainty right now, like what's your take on some of the spending like restrictions that we would have?
So so nu- number one question that I address with all the counties is where is health insurance going? And when is health insurance coming up for renewal? And we how many participants do we have? That are exceeding the stop loss maybe already or projected to exceed? So where does the that's the usually the million dollar question in every county? Who is our group health insurance expert?
Uh don't everybody speak at once.
You go first, Marty.
Well, while they're looking that up, we also have to look at the sheriff's pension uh pension plan as well.
Well, yes, we do. Now that that's one that we um with a couple of our counties last year. Uh we took a little bit of our surplus interest income. And we bought it down to bring down the annual contribution. I I I would have loved to done that, I'll do that in in Monroe County. But I don't think that's going to be uh possible at this point in time. With the even the looming, I I think I almost calculated seven hundred of additional. Uh if all of them would go through. I guess, so the really significant point is. We are addressing in, again, other counties. What at some point in time here, we need to start discussing what we want to model. The um possible increase in wages. And I'm telling you frankly, we've got some counties that have already told us it will be zero percent in two thousand twenty six. Uh and use that because if the growth quotient is zero, they can't really afford it, so. It's not really a spending restriction per se. But it's a what are we going to start restricting or what are we going to be limit to in the future? And and what we do not spend in two thousand twenty five only helps us in two thousand twenty six. So I guess what I'm also looking towards is of the fifty four million dollar budget. Is there a way, counsel and Bree? That we can go in there and say with some certainty and maybe not at March twenty first. But later on here, with some certainty whether we will spend fifty four million or not.
I know that um the council and I have um spoken about that and things um to consider moving forward, so I know it's on everyone's minds and. Um we can have further discussion.
Because what I consider a a restriction might be as bold as a uh deappropriation.
Yes, not bad.
Yeah, so and and I I I'm almost looking for deappropriations to to offset. Uh additional appropriations. And that would be my perception of a spending restriction. And quite frankly, say, if you've got any other additionals the rest of this year. Uh in unless they're absolutely necessary, I'm not sure they're on the agenda.
So obviously, that is definitely something, because again, the biggest thing that we don't want to do is make sure. Sorry, we have a little distracted, um. The biggest thing that we really don't want to do right now is to. Go like too extreme when it comes to something related to like layoffs or anything, and I I just want to say I am not saying that. So if anybody is looking right now, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I just want to make sure that we're not going to that extreme. Here, because we obviously see the uncertainty and all the breaking news that's happening federally. And the state things that are happening where that ultimately impacts what we do here on a local level here. So my my thought process, um and you can tell me if this is a start, so to speak, I would think it is. Is to limit certain things obvi- like such as overtime and comp time as much as possible, of course. I know that we have other departments that truly need to use that time because. There are times where they will need to tap into that, but I do know when we were doing budget last year, we saw. A a big ask for some people to have allotted so much in overtime and then they came in well below that ask. So what you're saying is is trying to do little things so that we don't have to go to the major things, is that right? Oh, you're muted. If you were saying.
Sorry, I'll say absolutely, and I will say that twice, absolutely. Because quite frankly, those things add up and and again. My point would be if you did have overtime and you are going to have to use it. Then that's one thing, but don't come for more. You know, use it throughout the year so you don't go over budget. Going over budget is going to be the real critical thing.
So using less is more so that if whatever we don't use in twenty five, it can go back into reversions for next year. That will ultimately continue to help us, got it. Um I'm looking at the table here because I'm seeing eyes and then. I'll I'll see Counselor Hock has her hand or her hand raised as well, so I'm going to go to the table first. Um I do see um Counselor David Henry is online, so I want to recognize uh him as well. This, we have the long term finance committee uh here that is able to ask, but we also noticed it to make sure that. Uh if council members that attend virtually on or online have questions, because this is the time to do so. That we are able to do so, so I want to look at the table first. Um and then we can go to um Counselor David Henry and then we can go to uh Counselor Hock.
Okay, just. Thank you, President Crossley, can you hear me okay?
Um, just one second, Counselor Henry. Um we're gonna go to the table first here and then at U Hill Room and then we'll come back to you in just a moment.
Sorry, um just to get a little bit more specific on um the recommendations from my office. I sent an email recently with a brief fiscal impact of the original proposed bill. Um with some suggestions for consideration on um temporary spending limitations to consider. Um basically just eliminating those unnecessary expenditures until we see how things shake out um in the legislation. So um I suggested just limiting unnecessary expenditures, including things such as unnecessary. Travel and training or out of state travel and training if that may be avoided. Um other things to consider, you know, just those large equipment purchases that might be able to wait until we um, you know, see how things turn out. Um in addition to that, perhaps just a brief pause on, you know, classification changes and updates. Um just, you know, briefly, and it was, these are just simply recommendations for for the counselors to consider. Um and there were a few other items on the list, but um I do want to um. Assure the public and FSG that these are serious considerations, um and I know that um they're under discussion.
All right, now, um Counselor David Henry, if you want to go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, uh thank you, Jen, uh and Greg, good to meet you virtually, I was speaking to you soon, I'm one of the new counselors. Um I wanted to opine a little bit on the the idea of um deappropriation. You know, one of the things that, you know, again, being new, but um not new to government is, you know, I think we are seeing, you know, as offices pose. Um deobligation and reobligation to different line items already that, you know, they've clearly budgeted for things last year that. They're now seeing maybe they don't need that resource for and are trying to use it in other spaces that. You know, we we probably should be a little more scrutinizing of some of that behavior. Um because if there's something we thought was obligated under the budget that made sense back in September and they're no longer. Focusing on that resource and want to use it for other things, I I'm happy to, I think, I think, look at those deappropriations a little more carefully. Um there's some of that I think moved through, um I know with some of the liaison. Work I've been assigned to that I already can see some agencies looking ahead to. Deappropriating and moving things around already, you know, in the first and second quarter of the year, so I I appreciate that as a tool here. Um yeah, just to share that. And then the second thing I wanted to say, it was a little mentioned earlier. Was um regarding the match for grants that, you know, because we do have boards and commissions that operate. You know, independently or a little autonomously from the elected officials by way of the appointments uh of those board commission members. Yet that may be in pursuit of grants that are not necessarily aligned with our 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 capacity to support. Um match on that, and so I I think, you know, President Crossley, I think this might be another opportunity for the liaisons to really work with those bodies where they have. Um board and commission work to make sure that the boards aren't getting ahead of us in terms of spending. Um without really consulting us before they engage in those grant opportunities, if that makes sense to folks in the room. Um that's it, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. And last but certainly not least, Counselor Hock.
Well, um I I council member Henry uh that gave me some other things to think about. Uh when he was talking about boards and commissions, you know, that's a that's an expensive a thing to every time you add another board, another. Commission that is not required by law to have. Uh and while we appreciate all the work they do. Uh if they meet in the evening and and it's for whatever reason, uh they feel like they have to meet at the courthouse. Does that not require additional staff to hold the courthouse doors open, et cetera? Uh and so maybe there would be some kind of accommodation made so they could meet in a building that's already open anyway, like at. At the library or something, so that we're not paying additional staff hours. Uh to keep those courthouse doors open beyond the five o'clock, that that's just. I didn't even think about that until he mentioned that the uh what I was going to mention. Was that if we uh do a slow walk on um any vacancies. Like if somebody has a vacancy in their department, if they could uh do a slow walk in in replacing that and that could then. Uh add to whatever funds they needed to and not have to do an additional. Uh uh you know, we've had in place in the past uh uh a freeze on uh. Any filling any slots, that didn't always work. I I know that now there's also the the opportunity to hire at a much higher. Uh entry level rather than entry level salary depending on their, what is they call it, KSA or something? And so that's additional dollars, so um you know, we might take a look at, and maybe Greg can help us with the list. Um here are some things that may look little but might end up being enough. To make sure that we are not working in in that dreaded thought of having to do a staff reduction. Uh without it just doing through attrition.
Well, in in Marty, you you know, at one point in time when we did do the freeze. We also suggested, in our liberty, that we've talked about this in other counties, not making a freeze, but. Calling it a hiring chill, and we actually called it that. And the reason is, um it's not a complete freeze out, but it's a if you want, if you get, someone leaves. And someone needs to be replaced, that the council weighs on weighs in on whether that is truly needed. Now, it puts a burden on the council and but, you know, I I think that's something, again, I kind of want. You to think a little bit about, and I can't disagree, I can't, I I really agree with what Bree said. And, you know, I like to tell all my county councils, it's January now, now it's February twenty one. Anything you start kind of putting the brakes on, the sooner the better, it adds up. Okay, so I'm I'm totally agreeing with uh what those those things that Bree pointed out. Because, you know, we've only technically got ten months left. We've only got four months, five months left before we're starting to talk about the twenty six budget. Time is ticking very, very fast.
And I I want, just would want to add that, uh and and Bree and I've talked about this as well. Uh that depending on what happens at the state and what they do with with that fund, uh you know, for the health department, for the health fund. Uh it it appeared, if I understood Bree right, that we were going to need to add to move dollars back into that fund, which is, of course, in in that. Uh levy growth fund, uh and so I don't know whether what other dollars we pulled out to that we, you know, to be. I know that we're thinking about, we have to add more back into the health. But whichever other ones we might have to add back into to make them whole uh for for next year. We have to look at that as really a reduction of the dollars that we've got to use for general. You see, am I making any sense there?
You are, but I'm not, Bree, what what did you read different than what I read? Because um everything I have heard so far on the Health First Funds. That the the state was pretty adamant about extending it beyond the period of of the end of this year. So they were adamant that that was, I mean, if you remember, Governor Braun even said, uh a healthy workforce. Is so critical to the economic development of the state of Indiana. And a mentally health, you know, mental health addressing that and having. Workers be able to go and get mental health resources is so important to economic development. That I thought that was an absolute top priority about still funding for the future.
Well, Greg, that it is, uh I'd certainly hope so. Uh what I was uh alluding to was we are required to put in so much money. It it's tied to, and Bree will explain all this, about uh the how much we have to put in in order to. Uh get this money from the state, we still have to put money into that fund.
Right, you keep the same levy, but I'll let Bree, yeah, go ahead, Bree.
Sure, so um the county um had previously funded the necessary matches within this fund and this fund has actually. You might recall from our previous last year at some point, long term financial meeting where this was touched on, but we actually were um. Over our target fund balance substantially, I believe, in this fund, I'll I'd have to check my notes. But regardless, we were um past, we had already put the funding in this fund that was necessary for the match for the Health First Indiana funding, so. It was, you know, discussed during budgets publicly, um as we were approving those, that although we had um. Less of a levy, we knew we were going to bring that up in the future at beginning with two thousand twenty six.
So that's part of the long run, and how much you thought that was going to be? Did you say another two hundred some thousand, Bree? I forget what you thought.
Um Counselor Hock, I need to refresh myself on the match amount, but I want to say around four hundred thousand dollars more.
So that's four hundred thousand right off of that. So that's 400,000 right off of that zero?
It wasn't a zero levy, I think.
No, no, I mean for next year. I mean for next year, the zero growth is what I'm saying.
Yeah. You're right, Marty. From that zero baseline, yes. Okay.
Right. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns related to the spending restrictions items on the agenda? Okay. Well, this was a lot to dive into, so I, I appreciate you, Greg and Charlie, for being able to help us navigate a lot of this. Again, I know that there are some council members that are here in person here, and of course, online, and those that aren't able to watch this here or be present, we're going to be able to pay attention to this after the fact. So as we all have this here, I would implore all of us as council members to really start thinking about how we don't have to go down the rabbit hole of major, major cuts here in the counting, and try to really work with our departments that we are liaisons to, to really try to figure out how we can move around and how we can really start to cut out some unnecessary spending, and I say that with air quotes. Some, basically, we just need to figure out how we can cut back, and any little thing that we learned here today helps. So if departments are watching, we will be working with you all, and, and we ask for you all to work with us as well to figure out how we can do this together, because we obviously don't want to lose our valued employees of the county, and we don't want to have dire consequences from all of the things that are happening right now. So I appreciate all of this, and I definitely am going to go back and, and watch this and compare notes and contrast, and we have some things that we got to do, and, and we'll get them done. And, you know, we are a fiscal body for a reason, and we got elected to do this, and we can do all hard things, and we will get them done. So again, if nobody else has any further questions or comments, again, thank you to Greg and Charlie for your help, and we will see you on Tuesday. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.